The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
I'd like to call the board meeting to order. Please rise for the vote of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which we trust ourselves for all.
Next, I'd ask Ed Dorff to read the mission statement for us.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you, Ed. Next is an open forum. Time for members of a community to speak before the board. I know we have one. One person to speak before the boards. I'll call up Nathaniel Jackson.
I'll shake his head now, so he's just here for this.
Yeah, Jackson.
So I propose that we extend to teachers in the Green Bay area public school district the benefit of being able to enroll their children in the schools at which they teach, provided their children meet the academic requirements regardless of the attendance area in which they live. I know of some charter schools that already offers this benefit to their teachers. To me, there is no stronger endorsement of the work we do or of the schools in which we teach than to have our own children enrolled by choice at our schools. Additionally, this benefit may help some schools integrate racially and economically in a positive voluntary way. Some schools have high concentrations of students who are from minority groups or who are economically disadvantaged. Meanwhile, teachers are predominantly white from middle-class backgrounds. While we continue to work on building a teacher population that reflects the diversity of our community, we could take this step toward effecting a small change in the student population. It seems to me that this benefit could be offered at little or no cost to the district. I'm not a budget expert, so you could figure that out if you wanted to. And I thought that, in fact, facilitating open enrollment may benefit the district financially if incoming open enrollments increase. This benefit also may play a factor in recruitment and retention of quality teachers. I am not aware of any law that prohibits such a benefit that I am proposing. And if there is no law that prohibits it, I hope you consider pursuing a plan that would be mutually beneficial to students, teachers, and the district.
And also Nathaniel, I forgot to instruct you to do this. State your address for the record.
1214 Klaus Street. 54302.
All right. We'll pass that on to...
I can leave you with the copy though.
Yeah. Nods over at the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have the Board of Canvassers?
Yep, I do.
Is yours all set? Okay.
Okay, so I will go ahead and read the certification.
Actually, I forgot to. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to the report of the Board of Canvassers.
Okay. This is, thank you Brenda. This is the certification of the Board of Canvassers. We, the undersigned, certify that we are the members of the Board of Canvassers for the Green Bay area public school district. We certify that the attached tabular statement of votes cast in summary statement of the Board of Canvassers, canvassed and prepared by us, are correct and true as compiled from the original returns made to Green Bay area public school district deputy clerk. We further determine and certify that the following persons received the greatest and next-to-greatest for primary only number of votes for the respective office for which each was a candidate on April 7, 2015. So we have Green Bay area public school district Andrew Becker. Congratulations. And Green Bay area public school district Ed Dorff. Congratulations, welcome, and all of our finery. And the Board of Canvassers are assigned Chris Teskey. And I cannot read that other signature. Oh, Anita, of course. Right, Raleigh, from both from the city. And I will sign it, and this is dated April 13.
All right.
Okay.
It's official.
It's official.
It's official.
Next, we have our election of school district officers and secretary to the Board of Education. I would first entertain a motion for election of president.
I would nominate Brenda Warren.
Second.
Anything else? All right. Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried five zero. Next, I would entertain a motion for election of vice president.
I nominate Katie Maloney for the office of vice president.
I'll second it.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Carried five zero. Next, election of treasurer.
I would nominate Chris Wagner.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for him since he's not here. Good of you.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Carried five zero. Next, for election of clerk?
I nominate Celestine Jeffries.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Carried five zero. And finally, election of secretary to the Board of Education.
Nominate Sandra Heller.
And that's a second? Because Sandy's boss.
You need her.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried five zero. So we will continue on for the next school year with all of our officers that have been in place for quite some time now. Next, we have our school board organization and related matters. Our appointments, I think, I talked with, well, I just, does everyone who's had an appointment last year want to carry on in their current work session group? So you, Andrew?
Sure.
Okay. Which leaves the seat open, Ed, for teaching and learning with Katie.
Sounds good to me.
If you're amenable to that. All right. So you have that, Sandy? Okay. Legislative liaison. I know Mike's not here tonight, but he has expressed an interest in continuing with that position. Is there anyone else who's interested? Or he's done a really good job for us?
He doesn't find a job. I have the time.
Yes. All right, we will continue with him in that position. And then we also have our CISA VII liaison and representative to the annual convention. And this is a position that, for your benefit, Ed, a position that they ask us to go to this annual meeting, which is May 13 at 6:30. I think the last couple of years, we haven't had anybody able to attend. But it's, and I don't know if there's anyone who'd be willing to be able to, be willing to attend that annual convention on May 13.
Historically, the rookie.
Typically, the new guy. The rest of us know enough not to make eye contact with him.
Chris won a few years ago, I think. And last couple of years, we haven't had anybody be able to go. So are you willing to do that?
Yes, I am.
All right. Thank you, Ed. And then WASB delegate and alternate, we usually don't determine those until the fall. But is there anyone who would like to get their name on the list today? And then we can reconfirm that the conference is in January. So we have to have that confirmed by September.
We usually typically, when we talk about it in our November meeting, we have to firm it up. The alternate we do in November.
Yeah, I know. The first one we usually do in September. Because they attend the meeting in November.
Wasn't it Mike and Chris last year? It was Chris. I was the alternate, but Chris was the delegate.
Mike's still on the board, right?
Yes, he's still on the board.
Oh, so he can't be the, right, got it. Mind of stick.
All right, at this point, we can wait a little bit and see if Chris wants to still do that. The Carl Perkins Advisory Committee?
Who was Andrew last year?
Warren.
And there probably weren't many meetings, if any.
Is that something that's continuing, the committee's continuing?
I guess I'll keep doing it then.
It's pretty easy to do.
He has no recollection of having.
And then our Head Start representative was Mary Franz. She did a really good job with that. And I don't know if there's anyone who's interested in, I'm trying to think. I think she went to, she would meet with Sally on a semi-regular basis. And did she attend meetings? Or did she just, I think she just met with Sally and just was kept abreast of what was going on within Head Start. Is that right?
Terry Michael.
She attended a monthly governance council.
Oh, she did. Okay, all right.
Do you know when that meets?
I believe it's flexible around the member who volunteers to be the board representative. And it's planned, it is required, it's a federal requirement. And the governance council, I believe, typically met on a Tuesday. But I think that's flexible based on availability.
I know you're looking at me. I mean, because I'm...
Oh, I'm just looking.
I'm, okay. I mean, I'm thinking, I just, I'm interested, but I just, I don't know, by the time. Because it would be good. It's interesting. It's interesting.
Is it a set time every month? Or can they flex the time each month?
It is a set time. It's their head and yearly representatives that also serve on that. But it's set prior. So it's a predict, it's a predictable schedule. There's some flexibility. I think Mary wouldn't meet privately with Sally if she was not able to attend the general meeting. So I do believe there's some flexibility.
Okay, all right.
Well, I have a lot of experience with Head Start and some good experiences with them. I'm certainly willing to take it on.
All right.
All right.
That'd be great. Thank you. What is your experience with Head Start?
Oh, I had Head Start at Elmo and I had it at, oh.
That's our research center.
I realized it was there. Good. It would be good. All right. Then we have the board structure and meetings. Sandy passed along the next year's list of our school assignments. And that's usually a pretty standard. She just rotates, just rotates those school assignments for us each year. So, okay, if you have any questions, or you just asked Sandy, but your list is there. And then board meetings, she, was that also in, does board members have a copy of that? Oh, it's in our NEPTU.
It's in the NEPTU, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I have a hard copy. And I think there's one, two, three, four, five months that Sandy was thinking we shouldn't meet the first and third because of holidays and first days of school and, or...
Wow, that's a lot.
Which is a lot.
Really? Yeah.
So it's, so just to highlight those for you. July is the third, is the third and, or the second and third Monday. Because July 6 is connected to the fourth weekend. So it's right after the fourth. September, Labor Day is September 7. So those two meetings will be the second and third. December, I guess, December I had a question about because it's, it's, the third Monday is the 21st of December. So the question is, do we want to meet the week of Christmas? Break starts probably the 24th.
23rd or 24th.
Two days before the break starts. Or do we want to meet the 7th and 14th? And then January, our first day back, right after winter break, is the first Monday, January 4. So she has it the 2nd and 3rd. And then March with spring break, it's the 1st and 2nd. And spring break is that third week. So that one, I think for sure we have to stick with. So anyway, we need to decide if we want to go with a schedule that's before us or, and keep five months off kilter, or change any of them, or whatever you want to do.
The 1st and 2nd, the 1st and 3rd. Okay, so wait, which ones, okay, March, December, January?
July.
July and September. Oh, go back.
We used to do the 3rd and 4th, Ed, but we decided that we wanted more time
In between.
Between to get more information, clarification, or whatever.
Personally, I'm fine with keeping it as it is. I mean, I wouldn't want to meet the week of Christmas. It's just not, I don't think that's going to be, that's going to work for me. But everything else seems okay. So I have to do my calendar again. July 13th and 20th. You know what? I think I might have some difficulties getting here for July. I'm going to be a driving fool again this summer.
All right.
So, but that's neither here nor there.
Okay.
The schedule looks okay to me, actually.
All right. Everybody else good with it?
Yeah, I think that's...
And then one thing, Ed, what we did the last few years to keep, because we often have extra board meetings, especially in the fall, especially in October, when we're doing the budget, but then other times too. We agreed as a board to keep all of our Mondays free so that we could quickly slot extra board meetings into those Mondays in between. That helped with people just, people's schedules, childcare schedules, those kinds of things. Just to let you know. So is that, we want to keep doing that?
I think that's reasonable.
I mean, I think it makes it easier if we have to, you know, finagle another day. But if we all agree to that, then it makes it more likely that we can just slot into Monday.
And if you have to schedule something for Monday, it's not...
Yeah, I mean, people are on vacation and, you know.
We just go into like the discussion as to what day we are all available. Eventually, we get there.
Those discussions are much quicker ones since we kind of, what, Monday is primary? A lot of times, it's a three-minute discussion.
Okay. All right, so we will continue doing that. Then, board member compensation and expenses. I think we have that policy in front of us. And I don't know, Sandy, I was talking to Sandy today. I think the board member compensation has been, has it changed in your tenure, Katie?
It changed my...
It changed, we used to get a per-meeting.
Oh, okay.
I think we changed it my second year, pretty early.
Right.
So that would be 12 years.
No, more than that, because I've been on the board 11. More than that, because you were...
Well, that's like, that was offered two years in between, so.
Yeah, you've got two years in between.
It would have been...
15 years.
I'm starting my 18th year. So.
Sixteen, seventeen.
See, if that waspired to, Ed.
Yeah, I know.
So I guess the question is, do we leave the salary the same? People think it's fair. It's not big, but its intention is to help people with their missing work or needing to hire childcare during meetings and those kinds of things.
It would certainly cost more than it did 16 years ago.
Right.
Well, you know, and I, I had raised this before. And Sandy had provided, I think, maybe Jean, what other school districts are paying? And, yeah, I mean, the compensation here is in line. It is. So, you know, I think that regarding people sitting around the table, it's, it's one thing. But I think the issue is attracting other people, especially people who are working. No offense, Ed, but people who are working. So I don't know. That's, I don't, I think that it's fine the way it is, but...
If we looked at, if we looked at just cost of inflation, I was just wondering, since 95, what would change that?
Yeah, but unfortunately, real wages have gone, have been made flat in many sectors, sadly. So...
Since 95?
Since 95, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you, Celestine. It's a, you know, I don't think anyone of us around the table are looking to raise our salary, but, and I don't have an answer for this. But would a higher salary attract more interest in being on the board or not? I mean, we're not going to be raising it by any substantial amounts.
It could be significant enough to.
I mean, you know, it's $4,800 per year.
Well, if you're, if there's two meetings, and if you just used to pay for childcare, that should pay for childcare.
Yeah, okay.
But then, well, I think it should pay for childcare. I didn't pay for childcare, so maybe I shouldn't speak. But five years from now, would that pay for childcare? I mean, that's the thing, right? Does it, does it compensate people enough, especially certain demographic of people, to be here? That is really the question, even though it's in line with what other boards get.
What if we, what if we changed it effective, so we're not giving ourselves a raise for this year? You know, we ran knowing what we were getting into, but effective, have some kind of a bump effective April of...
2016.
2016. Because I looked up the wage data here, and it's, the Social Security Wage Index is up quite a, quite a bit, too. And maybe if it was, you know, maybe if not until next April, you know, maybe you do 500 a month instead of 400 to account for 15 years. Because it'll probably be 15 more years until it happens again.
Yeah, and I don't know that the other question is time. And I have no answer for this either. In terms of, you know, in a bigger district, are you spending more time as a board member than a smaller? So then the, you know, then our wages should look more similar to districts that are the size of ours instead of the surrounding districts. I don't know. And I don't remember. Well, I know in Milwaukee, they get paid a lot, but that's a whole different thing. But I thought we were in line with Madison.
I thought we were in line with Madison. I thought we were in line with...
Yeah, as I recall, last year, so.
Yeah.
I mean, if, because that would be, yeah, I mean, I, if I increased it, I'd go, I mean, you know, baby steps, I guess, to 5,000 instead of 4,800, which isn't much. I mean, you're talking 1,200.
Well, just, I don't, I don't think it's going to happen every year unless you did, unless you got in the habit of doing, you know, looking at what we, you know, looking at whatever raise we gave to the, you know, whatever was the lowest unit. But then we're giving, we're not...
This isn't, this is meant to be reimbursed for childcare and stuff like that. It's really not meant to be a wage.
Yeah, but for, you know, it could be, it could be a balancing factor in the need of someone to take a second job and not do this. It was for me at one time.
You know, I mean, and it's interesting, city council, I mean, they definitely, I don't know what they've done lately, but they've increased their salaries fairly steadily over time.
They meet somewhat more and make a lot, lot more money.
Well, there's a lot more work, too.
There's a lot more work.
A lot more work. And you know, that, when you talk about board meetings, that's one thing. And then, you know, a lot of board members go and do other things. Not just serving on committees, but also just doing things in schools. So, I mean, it's really meant to be, it's really meant to be something that compensates you for somewhat, some of your time. But, I mean, essentially, we're elected volunteers, is how I see it. Like I said, the question is, though, is, is this enough? I don't feel like I have an answer right now. I don't feel like I have an answer in terms of coming to terms with what number that would look like. Is this enough to really help pay for some of those expenses for someone who has younger children home? Andrew's the only one who has younger children home, so.
You know, the, and if we went to, you know, maybe tonight's not the night to figure it out.
Right.
Maybe you think about it till next month. But, because I do, I do think if we do it, it should be starting with the next election period. There's, Congress has to do that, too. They have to have one go in between. So I guess if...
That seems reasonable.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, if we, if you look at the inflation index or the wage index, you know, if, since you want to do some kind of numerical starting point, it would be way more than to go to four, from 4 to 500. It would be like 657, which I don't suggest. But I think, you know, go to 500 effective 2016 would be, you know, since we haven't done it in 16 years, is, might, might make a difference for some people who would have to choose this versus a different, you know, versus a second job and balance those two out.
Well, food for thought.
Should we put it on the agenda for next, think about, put next month?
Next month?
Yep, that's reasonable.
And we'll have Mike and Chris here, too.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I lost my glasses.
Try and remember to bring two pair next time.
Yeah, I know. I do have a couple more in the purse. All right. Finally, we are to roll call. Sandy?
Wow.
Jeffries?
Here.
Dorff?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Wagner?
Excused.
Blacka?
Excused.
Maloney?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Chang? Johnson?
Here.
We, we have five members of the board at the table. Also, I'm joined to my left by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent. And we have two InterCity Student Council members, Lokin Chang, who's the president of InterCity Student Council from Prebo, and Grace Johnson from East High School. So feel free to ask, you've been here before, Grace? No, I didn't think so. Feel free to ask any questions, or if you have input, and we always like to hear, you know, student input, because obviously that's why you're here. And, and then any questions, feel free to ask. And then also at the table is our newly re-elected board secretary. Sandy Heller.
She was trying to run out the door. Did you see that? She was like...
Then we have minutes to approve. Regular board meeting, March 16, 2015. Special board meetings, March 30 and April 6, 2015. Special board meetings, closed sessions, March 16 and April 6, 2015. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, those are approved. We have no communications this month. And I will turn it over to Celestine Jeffries to facilitate monitoring reports.
Okay, thank you. Mark Smith would come join up, join us here at the table. We are going to discuss educator effectiveness.
Can't hide, it's a short enough table. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. This evening's learning report focuses on Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction's educator effectiveness system. Terry Willams initially helped shepherd in this initiative a few years ago. And currently, Ann Barsh and her team are helping coordinate the implementation of educator effectiveness. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Ann, and Ann's going to provide an introduction of her team, of one. And then, and then kick us off with the presentation.
Well, I thought there was no I in team, though.
That's true.
There is not.
As Mr. Smith said, I am Ann Barsh, and I'm the implementation coordinator for...
As Mr. Smith said, I am Ann Barsh, and I'm the implementation coordinator for educator effectiveness for the district, and this is Peggy Fisher, also known as Margaret Fisher, who is a teacher on special assignment and for educator effectiveness. So we are a team, along with a lot of support in the district from technology and assessment and professional learn, our teaching and learning department, so it's us with a lot of other people providing us the support. Tonight, our, our presentation, we're, we're going to talk through the why of educator effectiveness, the what is required, and also how it's been implemented, and then our plans for next year. So, why educator effectiveness? Element, the educator effectiveness has come about through the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which is also known as ESEA. ESEA was established in 1965, and its fundamental principle was to provide educational opportunities for the most disadvantaged youth. The DPI has supported and complied with the basic principles of ESEA, which are accountability, teacher quality, and research-based education. ESEA was reauthorized in 2001 under the No Child Left Behind Act. School districts across the country found no child left behind too prescriptive, with a heavy focus on punishment, and, and punishment rather than supporting improvement. As a result, the U.S. Department of Education allowed or offered states the opportunity to waive certain No Child Left Behind provisions, which the state of Wisconsin participated in. So educator effectiveness was put into place as a result of the No Child Left Behind waiver of 2012 and the Wisconsin Act 166. Wisconsin Act 166 has specific requirements around educator effectiveness and required the DPI to establish an educator evaluation system. So Act 166 further requires that 50% of the teacher evaluation score be based on standards of professional practice, and 50% be met, based on measures of student performance. And Act 166 also required that the implement, implementation of educator effectiveness happened this year of 2014, 2015.
I think if I could also insert, this is not a result of Act 10, which is important for us to, to mention as well. I think sometimes it gets lumped in there, but it is not. And then, well, I'll stop there.
You're right, it does, it gets lumped in there. Our next, the next slide will show that, the, how the summary scores are broken down through the DPI educator effectiveness. So this slide is a visual of the summary scores. So standards of professional practice, as indicated in Act 166, require that teachers be evaluated with reference to four domains that are part of the Danielson framework. So those domains are planning and preparation, classroom environment, instruction, professional responsibilities, and development. And Danielson is a framework that Green Bay has been using in the past, and so what has happened is, that was 100% of the evaluation process with, where the Danielson domains or that summative evaluation process, now that is 50% of the score.
And so then, the other 50% of the teacher's evaluation is based on student performance, and educators engage in a process of reflecting on their own student learning data, and then they establish student learning outcomes. And so the student outcomes summary includes both the student learning objective, the student learning objective process that educators use, and then it also includes, in a, a small way, school-wide data such as graduation rates or school-wide reading. This next chart represents a crosswalk, which is really meant to be a comparison of the roles and responsibilities that teachers have, comparing our previous model of supervision and evaluation to our educator effectiveness model. So there's many similarities between the two models. Both are performance-based, both promote reflection, they're based on the Danielson framework with the 22 components, both call for teachers to develop professional plan, the plan is mutually agreed upon by the teacher and the evaluator, and there's a process for observation, supervision, and evaluation. If we look at the differences, we're going to consider our new educator effectiveness model. In this model, teachers develop an educator effectiveness plan. Part of the plan is a professional practice goal that's based on identified practice needs from the teacher's self-reflection of the Danielson framework. The new part is the student learning objective part, and this is an identified student learning need based on a review of your student learning data. So each teacher is asked to look at their own data at the beginning of the year and write their own student learning objective based on student growth. Every teacher engages in a reflective cycle at the beginning, middle, and end of the interval or school year, and evidence of progress towards your goal is based on student data. The Danielson 2013 framework for teaching includes criteria that we didn't have in 2011. It includes specific descriptors of critical attributes and possible examples for each of the 22 components, which means there's a universal definition for teaching in that framework. Teachers partner with their evaluators, and they upload artifacts and evidence for professional practice and for the student learning objective. 50% of the score is professional practice, and the previous model was 100%. There's a holistic score of student performance, which includes the student, student learning objective, and as well the student learning objective process that was developed.
The next area we will talk about are the principal roles and responsibility in educator effectiveness, and the principal has a dual role. The principal is considered an educator for educator effectiveness, and ha, comes under that criteria, but the principal is also an evaluator with educator effectiveness, so has a, a different level of roles of, roles and responsibilities. And we'll start with this, talking about their role as an educator. If you, the, the principal writes an educator effectiveness plan, the, the same that a teacher does. The principal educator plan, educator effectiveness plan includes a school learning objective and a professional practice goal. The school learning objective focuses on building identified learning need, and for most buildings, that would be probably a literacy or math goal. The principal then identifies and implements leadership strategies that focus on achieving that goal. For instance, a strategy may include establishing a cycle of inquiry, so that they work with teachers to review their student, the teacher's student learning data on a regular basis, for instance, every six weeks, and talk about the instructional needs of students and what strategies they're putting in place to support that. They also may work around instruct, in, in doing something that informs instructions, such as writing common assessments, or looking at, even adding in behavior as part of instruction. You know, that can all be part of a principal's goal as they work on it. They also work at revising their strategies as the year goes on, so that there's, their school learning objective is really a living document based on what the needs are of their students and their teachers. The principal's professional practice goal is about the principal's learning, and the principal works on that through doing a self-review of the Wisconsin State Framework for administrators, and also as a part of the learning needs that they've developed, that they've decided on through their school improvement plan and with their, their leadership team. The educator effectiveness process, the, the process the teachers use is the same process that principals use. They have a beginning of cycle process where they're reviewing their data, they're looking at where they want to target their goal, they do a mid-cycle review, they do an end-of-cycle review, they go through a full observation process with their supervisor, they do pre-observation and post-observation processes as part of that. Something new for principals, our principals are also required to upload artifacts and evidence of their practice, of their professional practice, and they are also scored on their school learning goals, on the student outcomes of their school learning goals. Then we look at the principal, their role as an evaluator, and those responsibilities. The principal has provided professional, has provided the professional learning for educator effectiveness throughout the implementation. This has and will continue to include an orientation of the EE process, the steps of writing student learning objectives, leading Dallas data analysis, looking at root causes, really leading a professional learning community, implementing educator effectiveness. They also lead the student learning objective process with their teachers, and probably one of the largest areas of, should I say, stress for this year, rigor, has been all of our, all of our administrators, anyone who evaluates teachers have been required to go to through the TeachScape certification process. So TeachScape is a management system that the DPI utilizes, but Charlotte Danielson's framework is in TeachScape. And so, all of our administrators attended coursework on becoming certified that was led by our educator effectiveness department. They worked, they came in for extra study sessions, they worked outside of those study sessions with colleagues to study for the certification. And the sort of, the process is watching teachers teach, and experts, Danielson experts have scored those teachers, and so the goal is that, as a principal, you are able to align your evidence and agree with what the, the experts have seen for the scoring. It has taken a lot of practice. I would think at a minimum, people have put, administrators have worked at least 30 hours just in the study piece of it. Then the certification is done in two stages. Each stage, you are given six hours to take the certification. You watch videos, and you score the videos, you align the evidence with the components, and then you, that is submitted all through TeachScape. There is, there is high accountability, because if people, if anyone who did not pass either one of the stages was locked out of TeachScape, they could be locked out for 24 hours for a review if it was just one stage, or if it was a, both stages, it was a 30-day lockout. And then we have a plan that we put together to support people so that they would pass, and, and that was put in place, and we did have a few people who had some struggles, but we were, we were all there to support, and we, we all knew how much work it was. So everyone is certified, which, we did a lot of celebrating for that. In addition to the certification, each semester, administrators or evaluators need to recert, or recalibrate, and that's not as rigorous, and we did that, we did that, that people, teacher, or principals could do that with their collaborative learning teams or their professional learning group, for the discussion and the ability to really talk to each other about what they were seeing as evidence, and we have very strong feedback for that. So that's TeachScape. We're not done yet. Okay, I didn't know if you were clicking.
No.
So as supervision and evaluation for, for principals, they, they have, they are observed, they have an announced observation. If they are a new administrator, they are, they have, also have an unannounced observation, and then three to five mini-observations. Something got messed up. Okay, I'm just going to go to my slide, because that's not great, the, the right information. Oh, I'm sorry, it is. This is what the principals do with, I was thinking about the principal role. So principals, every teacher, if they're a new teacher to the district, meaning if they're an initial educator or new to Green Bay, they have an announced observation, they have an unannounced, and three to five mini-observations. Those mini-observations are 15 to 20-minute observations, of just walking into the classroom, wherever the teacher is teaching and recording evidence. If it's a formal observation, the, the supervise, the principal with the teacher has a pre-conference meeting where they talk about what they're going to see in the lesson, and then they also have a post-conference meeting to talk, provide formative feedback. In addition to that, the principal also facilitates the beginning-of-year reviews conference with the, the teacher on a summary year. They, they facilitate the mid-cycle review, they do an end-of-cycle review, and they also score the educator practice and the student learning objective. That is done with the educator.
If I could just also add, summary year is a new term for us. That was referred to as summative year, and that rotates every three years, if I'm correct. So, not every teacher is on a summary or summative year. Initial educators are, but then it starts to rotate that process, and we keep track of that throughout our district.
And whether or not they're on a summary year, they still are responsible to write their educator effectiveness plan, which is their student learning objective and their professional practice goal, and go through that process. Principals are also evaluated by their supervisors, and the supervision of principals is done through, using the Wisconsin Framework for Principal Leadership. Their framework is based on the ISLE standard that we've used in the past. There are two domains. Domain one is effective educators, and those components include human resource leadership and instructional leadership. Domain two is leadership actions, and those components are personal behavior, intentional and collaborative school culture, and school management. Observation evidence is gathered by the, by the supervisor and aligned to the framework as part of that process. There are, there's one formal announced school visit that the supervisor would do with the principal, and normally, that, that's a visit that would include a, a professional learning opportunity that the principal is leading in the building, it could include their work with their leadership team, it is, it's something that's substantial. The school sampling visits are really those visits that help you determine the culture of a building, so it could be, you're there to observe lunch processes before school, after school, it could be a family event, it can be any of those opportunities where you can get in and feel the culture of a building. The, the formal announced visit also includes that pre-conference and that post-conference observation meeting with the supervisor, and then the supervisor of principals also go through with the principal, the beginning of the cycle review conference, the mid-cycle, the end-of-cycle, they score the principal's school learning objective and the, the practice. In addition to that, is wrapped in the school improvement plan and, and those pieces that are ready, that are in place within our district. This past year, 2014, 2015, our implementation of educator effectiveness has been to guide the building principal as instructional leader for educator effectiveness. We've supported the educator effectiveness plan, that's where we've put a lot of emphasis is that student or school learning objective, and also then the practice. We've worked with TeachScape, which is that management system. That has been some work for us, I'll just say that nicely. I think it was not ready when we started the year, there were, we were fortunate that there were other districts who suffered the glitches, and we heard about them, and so we held off on, on getting started with TeachScape. So really, our teachers did not get into TeachScape until later November to January, and that was a good decision on our part, because we didn't have people angry at us for TeachScape. And then we've also led through the professional learning, DPI has, has mandated learning modules, and we have worked with those throughout the district.
And as we look ahead to next year, 2015, 2016, we've identified some educator effectiveness goals. One is, we're in the process right now of planning professional learning with educators so that we can lead them through a process of refining their student learning objectives so we can maximize student learning and achievement. We're also in the process of creating a repository of district exemplars, so student learning objectives that we consider to be high-quality as part of our continuous school improvement process. We're also mindful of the need and purposeful in planning for new educators to our district, including administrators, and we also have a plan in place already for our initial educators who will be joining us and who have had no previous educator effectiveness, professional learning. We're also thinking of our unique educators. Those are educators in unique roles, such as teaching and learning coaches and speech and language teachers. We're working with the DPI to determine how unique educators will be included in the EE process as we move forward. We're looking at full implementation next year of TeachScape, and any new improvements made to the online management system, and will continue to embed EE as part of that school improvement process.
Our role with educator effectiveness, this has been our mantra, that we improve support, we improve practice, and we improve outcomes. And the educator effectiveness system is designed for one main purpose, and that is to support educator practice, to allow for reflection and formative feedback and professional growth in order to increase student achievement. So we feel that educator effectiveness is our investment in our students, in ourselves, in one another, and in a culture of learning. And we'd be happy to answer questions.
Thanks, Ann.
Sure, you're welcome.
Thanks, Peggy. So are there any, thank you, Mark, don't want to forget you. Any questions? Ed? Ed?
I do, yes, please. Actually, I have three, one for each of you. I, I know, and I start off by saying, I know that there was a lot of angst, probably still is a lot of angst with this whole new process, but, Ann, I gotta compliment you and your staff, Peggy, for, you know, how, how easy you made it for folks. I mean, my, my three months at Washington and how gracious you were about coming in and helping people recover some ground that they kind of missed on that, and I really to your credit. First question, Peggy, you kind of addressed this when, when you're talking about specialized teacher, teachers, and I am thinking about the specific learning objectives, and you mentioned about, that they're based on a review of student data. Can you offer up a couple of examples of how that's, how that works with elective classes, related arts classes, special education, and possibly interventions, any of those?
Sure, sure. Currently, we're in the process of working with, I think, what you're talking, some of those special area classes like art, PE, and we're working with some of those teachers to say, we have students, we have data, how do we look at the data we have? Or what kind of data do we want to collect that we don't currently measure because of the systems of assessments we have, that will be meaningful to our instruction, so that we can help set goals for students to get greater achievement? So right now, we're in the process of saying, what assessments do we have, and are they meaningful to us in our roles? And if not, those educators are asking, which I think is wonderful, what can we do? What kind of assessments can we create that would be meaningful for student learning and meaningful for our instructional practice as educators? So we're working to define those. Right now, they have set goals this year, but I think part of the challenge, like we said moving forward, is how do we make that meaningful to learning?
So you mentioned art teachers. Would it be appropriate then for, for an art teacher to use informal assessments, the data that she's gathered on that, the LFRS or SLO?
It certainly would be.
Okay, cool. And then, Ann, just a question about, you said, we're all certified in that. For those folks who are evaluating principals, my question is, have those folks undergone the same TeachScape training and certification that principals are required to go through?
They have not, because it's not required by the DPI. The DPI is looking at creating a process for the supervisors of principals, but have not gotten to that yet.
Okay. And then, last question, Mark, what kind of feedback are you getting from principals about the time required to, to achieve all of this?
It's, it's a lot of work, as Ann alluded. I think one of the things from a secondary perspective that we, we attempted to do, and quite frankly, we're doing it at the elementary level as well, is looking at ratios of teaching staff to administrators, to balance that out. We have some guidance that we've looked at in the years past, but it's, it's a lot of work, and that coupled with the professional learning that principals have to do, that's gonna be an ongoing challenge. We're gonna continue to look at how we staff buildings, and do we have the appropriate number of administrators in the buildings to allow for them to be an instructional leader? I think that that's something that we continuously look at, and, and so, it's a challenge, you know, quite honestly. I think that our principals work tirelessly to get out into the classrooms and to do the observations, and, and we've made some inroads in the last couple of years. I know, I feel fortunate at the secondary level, and I know at the elementary level, we're gonna continue to look at that as well, those ratio pieces.
So, since in charge. Yes, sorry, I'm thinking. Sorry.
She's positive thought, okay.
Yes. Cheryl?
Just, just as a follow-up, Ann, I know that when you were first out looking, are there districts that have teams of, that go out and do evaluations in buildings because of the capacity that's needed?
Yes, there are.
So there, there are a number of districts that have teams of retired principals, is that who's doing that?
They do. Many districts have more support in terms of pure support coaching and...
Yeah, I know that in my conversations with the DPI, knowing the amount of touches, you know, it's a lot of touches, and it's important, but, you know, I think in a perfect world, we'd have enough resource in a building, because then you can provide not only the evaluation, but the supports. And I think that that's the piece that the centrally deployed teams who are going out and evaluating, they just evaluate, but then what? And that was my great concern to begin with, is the then whats? You know, if you don't have the capacity within the building to support these people up, then is it a gotcha game? I mean, I really...
Well, then that's my concern, right? Are districts under the threat of any sanctions if they're not able to get everybody once every three years using this whole process?
That will, that will happen. We are, we are required to put, the DPI will know our, our summary cycles, and every educator that's on a summary cycle, their scores are entered into TeachScape. The DPI will upload those scores. They don't upload the evidence or artifacts, anything else, but they do upload the scores. So they will have access to that.
To, just to further expand upon that, we, we've tried to execute this transition from the premise that it's a learning year, and that we don't have it all figured out. And then if we support both levels, teacher and administrator, through that from a learning perspective, we feel that that's, if, if we're going to get to this point of holding folks accountable, there's gotta be an equal to or greater degree of support to get to that piece. And so we've tried to really take that approach and recognize that although the Department of Public Instruction may have this, it's a process for us to get to that, and we wanna be wise about that, and we wanna be supportive to put people in position so that they can be successful. And that does not take away from the need to be in classrooms and observe and to work on improving practices. It's about how do we get to that point.
But it, but as a follow-up, just to be very clear, even though it's a learning year, it wasn't a year where people could decide if they were in or out.
Absolutely not.
If that makes sense. I mean, everyone had to be in. I saw a high degree of, of stress amongst the administrators. They worked very hard, and I, I would offer in support of what you saw, and I saw huge support coming from the district office, from not only the team in front of you, but others as well, to provide those supports, to ensure that people have the skillsets that they needed. And I think that the people who struggled most were the ones who overanalyzed what they were seeing, you know, and agonized. When you're taking a six-hour exam, that's a lot, and that's what it took, to do all the videos and then score them, and it, it was pretty intense, so...
I'm just gonna say that, on the Fourth of July, I got a call from a principal who was preparing to, to take their first Stage One certification on the Fourth of July. People, and I talked down the ledge a little bit, I had talked down the ledge, but, but that was a level of stress, that people would, they just needed to talk and say, okay, can I do this? So it was just tremendous, tremendous.
Certainly an acknowledgement of the accountability and the impact that would have if they didn't do it well and right, because of, because the student scores for that teacher are part of their, that teacher's evaluation. So the accountability has to be done well and right to support the teachers and, and have all that. It's a, it's a new environment, but it's, it's certainly, we all know that the teacher is the most important to elevate student achievement. So if we don't have that right, we're not gonna get the outcomes that we desire for our kids.
Anything else? Andrew?
I guess my, my question is, the stakes are gonna get higher and higher with educator effectiveness, though I'm certainly glad we didn't put the stakes of your educator effectiveness score where certain other districts have gone to it, gone to some real extremes. But nonetheless, it's possible that, you know, some of these scores could be career-altering. Although we have very good people on this project, the, the ratio of people we have for the size of the district, if I remember correctly, it pales in comparison to your, your district, like not even close.
Yeah, they, they evaluate, but they have centrally for twice as many teachers, thirty evaluators.
And we have, and we have how many?
Well, each principal in a building, but this is an outside group too, in addition to the principals. I know Madison, when you went and visited Madison in Milwaukee, they have large central office teams that they deploy as well, so you're making a very good point.
In addition to principals?
In addition to principals, absolutely.
So there's principals who are, but in the other districts, principals are still heavily involved, plus a large central office team?
Yes.
Where we have, we have principals centrally involved, plus a much smaller central office team.
There it is.
We have some department, district administrators that, that help pick up some supervision of areas, for example...
In your spirit time.
Like I picked up five. I picked up, I picked up to support, to pull off some from, from a building, but, you know, we've been able to do a lot with educator effectiveness through the use of technology. We are able to get a message to all of our teachers through a webcast or through, you know, we were able to really get the message there by supporting principals, walking principals through it. They let it in their building, but we could bring the information to them in a different way than we, than probably has been done in the past.
Which is good for information delivery, but what about the time required for the actual evaluation?
Well...
I think, Andrew, you, from a continuous improvement process, one of the things that we'll do at the end of this year is, we will review the implementation, we'll review how our principals have actually been able to do the evaluations, and to be able to assess, quite honestly, where we are. And I think that's, that's what we need to do to honor the work that they've done this year at the building level, and then be able to make decisions based upon that. Such a balancing act, because we know that we want the evaluation, the observation to take place by an administrator that's in the building, that knows the culture, that has a relationship, and we don't, you know, we don't want like, you know, to deputize somebody to come in and to do the observations, 'cause that is somewhat artificial. So, all of that's part of a review process, but I think you bring up a good point. Do we have enough folks to be able to do it effectively and efficiently so that we can follow through on our mantra, which is to improve outcomes overall?
Did you feel, Michelle, in your former district, that you had too many central office people?
You know, they, that particular model was part of the merit-based pay system, and it wasn't, it was just being implemented, so I don't know. I know, though, that Ann and Terry actually spent time in Milwaukee and in Madison looking at theirs. I, I think it will be, I appreciate what Mark Smith is saying in that we have to see how it's working for us. A lot of people have picked up a lot of, a lot of additional responsibility to make sure we can get it done this year, but I really think that if we don't do it with the supports and coaching that's needed, we won't get the outcomes, and then it's just an effort to be compliant, and that will not improve student achievement. And so I think that that's the, that's the balance.
So what are the ratios like in Madison? How many, how many, how many support people in addition to principals does Madison have?
The teacher, they, we, we have the same ratio that they do with evaluation that we have, for the number of people on summary year, we have one evaluator to fifteen people on summary year.
Is what Madison has?
Yep. We have the same. Milwaukee is right around that same, but Milwaukee brings in extra people. You know, they're, they're in a different situation because of their, their district status, you know, so...
Okay.
And they, and they really, yeah, they have a lot of support.
Okay, I feel, I feel better if we're, if we're similar to other districts as far as ratio.
We did research that.
We're similar, and we, we were able to take advantage of resetting the summary year, so that we could put schools, so you could reset where you were from the previous year, and I, and, and create more manageable ratios. So if I'm the principal of X school, I can look at my whole list and say, who do I wanna reset to get on a summary or summative year so that we could get to the ratio of about fifteen? I will say, though, that there are some schools that are just simply higher because of student enrollment in those ratios, and that's the piece that I think that we need to continuously review, and as enrollments continue to grow in some schools or move in other schools, that's a piece that we have to stay on top of.
So we have elementary buildings, I would presume, have more than doubled the number of teachers and sometimes no assistant?
Correct. Now it becomes, how many do they have on their summary or summative year as compared to a secondary building that maybe has three administrators? They can have more on their summary year. But elementary is, you know, some of our large elementary schools are schools that are on our radar, that we need to continue to take a look at.
Take a look at for?
The ratio of administrator to teacher, administrator to student.
'Cause some...
Go ahead.
Some of those schools have a principal and then a dean of students, and the dean of students can't evaluate.
Right.
Right, so there's no, so there is one, one elementary with the licenses associated, or?
Two, I believe. We have Powell and we have Nicolay.
Nicolay.
Okay. So all of the other ones have one principal?
Sullivan. I was gonna say Sullivan has, yeah.
And, you know, and we addressed that with some of those schools that do have that larger summary load, and one of the principals, you know, we, we brought that option, option up as we talked about this. We said, would it be supportive to you if we brought someone in to do some of those evaluations? And that particular principal, the principals we talked to said, no, I don't want other people doing evaluations. I, you know, I, as long as I have this dean of students who can pull off a lot of those other things, I wanna do my own summary evaluations.
And then just, we, there's been no funding for any extra positions or anything from DPI, is that right? Still that way?
The, the DPI provides a grant for the licenses, the TeachScape licenses, that is $141,000. We pay it, and then they reimburse us. And we have the opportunity to, for the last two years, to apply for a $25,000 grant to implement.
But your, your question, no, DPI does not support financially what it would take to maintain, sustain, and improve educator effectiveness.
So what does it take to maintain, sustain, and improve educator effectiveness? In terms of money?
Well, I think, I think this is the conversation, in terms of do we have enough administrators?
Associate principals in the elementaries, yeah.
But we have two positions.
And two positions.
And, and what you don't see is what's done behind the scenes as well, and HR is involved, and, I mean, technologies involved.
Technology is involved, assessment is involved, special ed is involved. We've had, we do have really wonderful support, it's been, and the generosity of other responsibilities.
Everybody's time, yeah.
I feel as if we've been able to transition into and through this fairly well because of the work that has come before us. If you go back to the collaboratively agreed-upon teacher supervision evaluation framework back in the day between GBA and the district, that Charlotte Danielson framework was what was eventually revised, but adopted as one of the models for the state of Wisconsin, and that had, that had helped us quite, quite a bit in terms of just background knowledge and our administrators, you know, being trained in that. So that's certainly helped us transition into that as well.
Yeah, teachers were, I mean, for a number of years, used to having principals drop in their classes, and yeah, and that was not a new culture thing they had to get used to, yeah.
And, and yet a little bit of a different game when you start to put outcomes connected to their end-of-the-year evaluation, and we had to lead folks through that process so that they, they understood, you know, I think to Andrew's point, that it wasn't gonna be that we were gonna pin the scores on the bulletin board and, you know, and to, it was about growth. It was about taking them where they were and being able to support it through that process of improvement.
Well, speaking of pinning scores, you know, I don't, I don't think I know the answer to this. So, these scores through TeachScape that get downloaded to DPI, is, how is that related to the public? I would imagine it's not related by teacher name, but is it somehow, does that information even in the aggregate get floated to the public?
No, it doesn't.
We've been told by DPI that that is an internal feed-up to DPI, so that... We've been told by DPI that that is an internal feed-up to DPI, so that they have a system of accountability, that we have our, our system in place in Green Bay, and then that's it, you know, that, that is what our, our expectation has been. Now, remember, that's just-
So it goes nowhere?
-summary score that we are required to upload.
It, it, it is available to the teacher and the administrator through the confidential WHAMs.
But it doesn't get aggregated and tabulated for some other part of the report card?
At this point.
Yeah? It goes nowhere?
Remember, this is a first year.
I find this hard to believe.
It, it gets uploaded into WHAMs, it's part of the, the, the teacher receives the score, and then the value added of that, you know, either the reading level, reading score, or graduation rate, and the principal is also gets a score, but at this point, it is not public. This is the first year of implementation, and I'm sure that, I won't say that it would never happen, but at this point, it is not.
At this point, no.
No, no, it's confidential. Even, even at this level, really, only, at the district level, only the administrator and the teacher have access to the, to the information.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Mark, what's coming next?
Yep, as a matter of update, we have one more learning report that we'll bring to you, that's around intervention, so Mike Frees, Nancy Schertz here, myself, maybe a few others, will be providing you an overview of intervention, similarly, in terms of the need, and then where we currently are, and then what next steps are relative to district-wide intervention plan, and how we support the students that are not performing where we need to perform them, where they need to be performing at, so that'll be next.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. That concludes my report.
All right, thanks, host team. Next, we'll move to superintendent's update.
So I'm going to start with the calendar, it's the merry month of May is right here, right around the corner, we have Staff Appreciation Week coming up on May third through ninth, and then I want to draw your attention, on May fourth, we would like a special board meeting that begins at five fifteen, I'm understanding there could be a number of employment opportunities that need to be addressed, so on May fourth, that would be immediately before our regular teaching and learning work session at five thirty here in the boardroom, and then immediately following the teaching and learning work session, we will have the organizational support meeting as well. May seventh, we have our retirement recognition ceremony again at five o'clock at Riverside Ballroom, and I know, speaking with our newest board member, Mr. Dorf, he likes the chicken there, and so, and some of us join him in that as well, so I'm hopeful that people will join us to celebrate and recognize those who are, who have dedicated their lives to children here in the district. On May thirteenth, we have the Cooperative Education Service Agency Annual Convention, and I believe we have someone to attend that, and that's on the thirteenth, and then May eighteenth is our regular board meeting at five thirty. On May twentieth is one of my favorite days of the year, the Student Art Reception here in the district office, it's, it's a time that I have to meet with our extraordinary art, artists, each school sends one piece of art and chooses one student, and that's from four to five thirty here downtown, and their parents come, and it's a great day to celebrate, and teachers as well. On May twenty-fifth, we have Memorial Day, the district is closed, and I believe that we don't need our snow day, so that's coming up, we won't need that, so, May twenty-sixth, it means the students have an extra day, and, and staff who are not assigned, they're smiling at me at the table, that's good news.
It's supposed to snow tonight.
Is it? Oh, I know.
Mist, mist, no, mist.
We've gone this far, where's Mr. Stengel, is he here?
Negativity.
He says no, Mr. Stengel says no, we're not, he's not going to go drive the roads at four AM for him. Very good. May twenty-seventh is our, is our end-of-the-year intercity student council meeting here in the boardroom at seven AM, and then we're moving into June, the CSU seven senior awards banquet coming up at the Rock Garden on June fourth, and then we get into wonderful celebrations of graduation, again, at the Crest Event Center, we have East High School coming in at noon on June seventh, followed by Southwest at three thirty, and West at seven, and I think that that, just moving those, all those graduations to one day, has been a significant cost savings to the district by doing that, and also, it's a tremendous amount of work for Associate Superintendent Kim Paulo and Assistant Superintendent Mark Smith that day as well, and the high school principals who really shepherd these kids through. On June tenth, we have the Preble High School graduation at seven PM, and then we have a relatively large class, I think, this year, at John Dewey, June eleventh is their Academy of Learning graduation at five thirty, so lots coming up on the calendar.
Quick question.
Yep.
Sandy, are you sending out sign-ups for graduation soon? Okay, you'll email those to us? Okay.
Have it included with the board update?
Okay.
Okay, so watch for those, sign up.
The next item I have is about our district's strategic directions. When the board put the strategic directions in place, it was, how many years ago, two thousand and twelve, I believe, and, and a number of them may, may be, as we've started to try to operationalize them over these past few years, we would offer that they might need a little tweaking, and a little more clarity, and so what we were thinking as cabinet, is to, in, in partnership with the board, a small group, to look at them, to see if any of them are, are still exactly what we want, and just take a review of them, and see if we need a little more tweaking to them, or a little more clarity around them. And I'm, I don't know if the entire board would like to do those, or if you'd like a small group to take a look at them, combination of cabinet and some, and some board members, and then bring them back to the large group for consideration, or how would you like to proceed with that? We could, you know, set up a day, and we could all look and work on them together, or whatever your preference is.
Well, I think, you know, we've worked on them together, I think we should, we should continue to edit them together.
Okay.
Meaning the seven of us.
Would it, would it be helpful if we, we brought forward our areas and questions of concern, and, because I think that that's the piece, is as we try to operationalize them, that's our challenge in some places, so to have that conversation, maybe we should do that in a retreat kind of environment?
Or would it, would it be more efficient to have the seven of us, and then a certain number of cabinet members there to answer questions and give feedback at that time?
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
That's what you mean, okay.
That's what you were saying.
I was thinking you were submitting your feedback.
No, I was thinking if we could, we could talk through the areas that we need further clarification in.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Do we want to put it on our calendar? I know Mike and Chris aren't here, but...
Yeah, I think it's something we could look at, at for summer work, I don't know that there's-
Why don't we, Sandy, can you put that on our agenda for the next work session meeting?
Me to schedule?
To schedule.
Maybe we could even put some dates out there and see even before that went-
Yeah.
You know, so that we don't start bumping-
Or if we look, I mean, if we're doing the Monday thing.
Well, we got to make sure that Mike-
So maybe after graduation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that what you're thinking?
I'm thinking after graduation, I'm looking to the team over there, yeah, I think we're good with that.
Some middle of June, something, okay.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, let's do it that way.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, so we'll do that. And then, moving to the next item, just in terms of success stories, there's a packet in front of you, but I wanted to point out, we have so many wonderful things going on in the district, and we've had a lot of visitors, and most recently was today, we had the Lieutenant Governor visit us, Rebecca Clayfish, along with John Mako, who visited BayLink Manufacturing, and I just wanted to point out that, leading the front page of the Wisconsin School News magazine, you see a picture of the students from BayLink, and there's a really good article that talks about building the future for manufacturing in the state of Wisconsin. A couple of weeks ago, we had, and I'll talk a little more about his visit, but we had Congressman Reed Rivel, and Congressman Roquita from Indiana, who is leading the reauthorization of ESEA, along with FERPA, visit us as well, and so that's leading the news there. If you get the annual report from Green Bay Foundation, you'll find a piece on the Fine Arts Program, and the scholarship that is provided for an East Fine Arts student who comes through that track, and this is the nice picture of, it is a Resh Scholarship, Sharon Resh, in our community, and it shows a picture of the young lady who was fortunate to receive that scholarship, very successful graduate of East High School. Also, coming up this week, we have a press conference to, to have the conversation with our community about Stadium City Automotive, and the Green Bay, Greater Green Bay Chamber, actually, is part of their Collective Impact Magazine, speaks to the work that's going to be going on at East High School, and nice, nice interview with the teacher at East High School, and then, and defines what MATF certification is, and Lori Peacock is interviewed as well, and I know there are a large number of funders who have stepped up to the plate, who will help us be doing those renovations and things, and investing in that particular program, just like we saw at BayLink, so that's very exciting. If you didn't see the Press Gazette this morning, there is a nice article that talks about careers and, and building a future of pride in our community, and it talks, is from Tammy Baldwin's visit, and I would encourage you, if you've not read that, to take a peek at that.
Is that in our packet?
I don't, I don't know if that one is, I think it is. I think it is, and then the other-
It's in the packet.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah, and then the last piece I wanted to point out was, Education Week is a national publication that really has breaking news about what's going on in education across the country, and in this particular featured article, it talks about, the whole focus of this grouping of articles is about blended learning and, and barriers in access to technology, and there is a very nice article that features the Green Bay Public School System, and the fact that, that we afford kids who may not have as many opportunities in life, that learning is our priority, and we recognize that we need to get devices in their, their, the kids' hands, and it, I think Lori, or Diane Durst speaks about the Kajit, which is that hotspot that kids can check out in the library and take home, and it's working well, and I think it's a, it's an investment that we have to recognize we need to make, until Diane gets the entire Brown County wireless. She's working on it. She's working on it, she pitched it at Lambo Field the other day with some-
Yeah.
-folks, and Lambo is going wireless, you may or may not know that, but Diane was invited to speak-
Outside the stadium, too? Like, in the parking lot?
Yes, and so it was a, it was a wonderful opportunity, and Diane was invited to speak on a panel with some of the premier CTIOs across the country, because Lambo is going Wi-Fi, and in the process, there may be some opportunities for students, because I think as part of the game experience, they expect that people will be accessed, accessing their, their devices during the game, I think, and so they're looking to perhaps even employ some students during the football season, to be able to help people make sure they get on their devices and access their devices, so there's, that's an exciting connection that Diane was able to bring forward, but she did pitch Brown County wireless, and they seem to be interested, I, I listened to the, to the, to the-
Well, that'll be interesting.
Google chat.
How many people sit at Lambo, seventy thousand, eighty thousand, right?
One thousand.
Eighty-one thousand.
That would be interesting, if they could really have enough for people to be streaming, eighty-one thousand people to be streaming all at the same time. They're putting in a thousand wireless access points, Green Bay area public schools have close to two thousand wireless access points.
Hmm.
But we have forty-six.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I was gonna say, we're spread out a little, they are. Yeah, yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Student opportunity.
Student opportunity.
Will we be meeting with their leadership team and technology team at the end of this one, or, or finding out more about that?
Another student opportunity, speaking of Lambo, is the Culinary Arts Students had a, had a wonderful opportunity to go over and work with the chef for the Green Bay Packers, and some of them have the opportunity to, to interview, and now there's the potential that they will be flipping pancakes for the Green Bay Packers, so I think their, Lori Peacock was out on that one, and Ann has brought it back, and I think that they're working that angle as well, so, great opportunities out there. So that completes, I think, my official report today.
All right, thank you very much. We have no legal update this month, and next is our intercity student council report, turn that over to Lowkey.
Thank you. So for the first item on the intercity student council report is high school news, and last Tuesday, there was an academic competition held at West High School, which all schools participated in such, in subjects like math, English Language, Science, Central Studies. Green Bay East won first place in English Language Arts, and they also placed fourth in mathematics, and Preble won first in science, and fourth in social studies, and at Preble High School, Kaylee Tillman won the United Healthcare Youth Volunteer Award at the WPS, Wisconsin Public Service Volunteer Awards. Isabella Samuel was named to the Press Gazette's All-Air First Basketball Team, and Preble Track Team won the city meet and became city champions, and at East High School, Andrew Fluger was named the Young Entrepreneur of the Year by Wisconsin Business Hall of Fame. He started a business around his heart, around his hobby, which was remote-controlled vehicles, and he started out with an investment of two nine, two hundred and ninety-two dollars, and now his company is worth over thirty thousand dollars, which is very impressive. Kalen Holzer was named to the 2015 Press Gazette Academic Team, and the, the academic team has ten, they accept ten applicants, and these students represent the best students academically, in extracurriculars and community excellence, and at Southwest High School, Natasha Hyman was named Green Bay Pressie's at Girls Basketball Player of the Year, and their self, the Southwest Music Department received a Community Achieving Award at the NUW Recognition and Volunteer Banquet, and at West High School, their team, their DECA competed at state meet, and two members will advance to the international meet later this summer, and for upcoming events, Wear Yellow Day is on May eighth, to support cancer, sting cancer, at all schools, Preble, East, Southwest, and West, and then East High School has their annual play, The Curious Salvage, will be shown on April twenty-third and twenty-fourth this week, and that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Next is our Legislative Liaison Report, and I think in Mike's absence, you're in charge.
I don't have nearly as much as Mike usually has, I hope he doesn't mind if he's watching along at home. I wanted to start just with the federal legislation around the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind, that last iteration of ESEA is, is the Reauthorization of Elementary and Secondary Act, which in 2001 became NCLB. Now it's being referred to as Every Child Achieves Act of 2015, and Congressman Roquita, who was here from Indiana, along with Representative Congressman John Klein from Minnesota, have been working on this a long time, and I think their ultimate goal, talking with Representative Roquita, is that, what they hope to do is provide more autonomy and decision-making at the state and local level, including financial resources that typically come through federal title dollars. There was a discussion about dollars and accountability, and I think that there was a, there's a summary that can be provided that came out April thirteenth, that really looks at some of the changes. I think it's interesting, as we talk about educator effectiveness, that the requirement, which was part of the waiver, is no longer there, so they're taking some of these things that they think states are having barriers, highly qualified teachers is, is, is not there anymore in this particular proposal, and there's some significant authority given back to states, but also the recognition that with accountability, there are some areas that you have to, you know, do a state assessment, but also- but also recognize there can be other areas to assess, not just math and reading. And in fact, the arts are considered as part of their bill and also more specifically music, which I think is interesting. So the Senate version is different. And you know where that could go, maybe nowhere. But we're hopeful, I think, that, you know, there were some things he said that I thought were really important. Removing maintenance of effort is something that is something we've struggled with. Maintaining effort in spending is something that doesn't always make sense in terms of special education. And so to look at that a little differently is one thing. The other thing that he spoke about is the reauthorization of the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, the FERPA. And what's interesting about that is the comment that he made to me is, "You won't like it, you won't like it, you won't like it." And I said, "Why is that?" And he said, "Because it will be extremely rigid, you know, with the changes and all the technology."
Yeah.
It's.
Sounds like I'd like it.
Well, that's what I said. I'm not sure. That's what I said to him. "I'm not sure I won't like it." So anyway, we're in process of seeing if we can help out with that and even provide some input on that as to where that's gonna go. So that's what's happening. Tammy Baldwin speaks to her in that article I shared with you, talks about the CTE bill that she is supporting for and after school, opportunities as well.
Excuse me, I don't know what that is, actually. The CTE bill?
Well. She put out, and I don't want to misspeak, so as long as I have it in front of me. She actually put forward, let's see. She has made career and technical education one of her top priorities. And what she's looking at, she speaks about our current reality. And then she's part of the CTE Caucus. And she's advocating for science, technology, engineering, and math education and supporting efforts. And I believe she has a bipartisan bill that would designate 25 universities as manufacturing universities and provide incentives to better align educational offerings with the needs of the modern manufacturing. So when she was visiting here, we talked about what schools needed, you know, and we talked about what she could provide to universities for incentives that would want to take students and provide more support for them as well as they moved into careers in manufacturing. Not everybody is as willing to support students as our community is. And our Technical College has been very much on board. As you all know, students can get transcribable credits for being in BayLink. And we'll see the same thing with NATF. So it's to incentivize that in Michigan as well. Does that help?
Yep.
Then on a state level, we had some interesting information about the Government Property Insurance Fund. And I don't know, Ellen, do you want to come up and speak to that briefly? That would be great. It's because it does impact us.
The Local Government Property Insurance Fund is the insurance that we use for our property in the district. And it really is used statewide by cities, counties, villages, school districts, anything that's a governmental unit or other clients. And they have been, we have used them for a lot of number of years. They've been very flexible to municipalities. They even have the oops clause. If you forget to put one of your buildings on there, they will still cover it if something happens to it. And with the number of school building issues in the last year for different high schools, the Joint Finance has looked at that and wanted to eliminate the Local Government Property Insurance Fund starting with next school year. And it doesn't give a lot of time for anybody to go find another source for your property insurance. But there has been a change in that the, right now, the language has now been changed to a two-year before they would make, eliminate the Local Government Property Insurance Fund. It certainly has lower rates just because of the sheer number of people that are part of the Local Government Property Insurance Fund. If we would have to look outside, we would probably be looking at some big increases in our property insurance. I mean, certainly not all city, county, school districts are using them. They have been very, you know, they're very cooperative. You get your answers the next day. You call up and get the support you need from them. And so we are hoping that where it is right now, that at least it would give us a two-years to be able to, well, I would like to have it continue. But at least we have moved from June 30th, everybody's gone, to at least a two-year window for districts and cities and counties to make a decision what they want to do with their property insurance. And that's the only insurance that deals just with property. So that was definitely good news. I'd like to see better news, and it could get better. Hopefully, it won't go the other direction.
But that's, the Joint Finance Committee supported that amendment to extend the time, the window there.
And again, I think there were a lot of municipalities, districts that made comments to them. Because, you know, it is very unrealistic to, at this point in time, to tell people that, oh, we're sorry, we're not going to have anybody in the insurance fund anymore.
Ellen, would you anticipate municipalities and districts banding together to try and seek out?
Well, there's all been some discussion on that already, that if they would close it, that they would, that the counties, cities would get together. There has been some discussion on that. Again, you already have the structure there. It would be, you know, better certainly if they kept it together versus, you know, municipalities trying to have to pull that all together. You know, it certainly is much difficulty. But I think you would see the bigger districts probably would be the ones that would pull together their own brand-new fund versus trying to have everybody in it. I don't think they would have the time to do that.
Thank you for that. And the school funding bills and the K-12 funding continues to be a conversation that's out there. As you know, the proposal would eliminate the categorical aid for this year. But I know that folks, Senate Majority Leader, I'm looking at this, Scott Fitzgerald spoke recently about it. And he basically said legislators are committed to fully funding the K-12 schools in the first year of the budget and predicted improved revenue would allow for an increase in the second year. I think that in the latest Marquette poll, voters were very strong in their opposition to the current budget as it stands. And I think that legislators from both sides of the aisle have voiced that they would be looking for and willing to provide more resource and support. And I think there's an ongoing concern about the higher ed funding as well for the university systems. The bill on school accountability continues to be at odds with each other. The Senate and Assembly version are very different. The Senate version, as you might recall, does not include sanctions and it does not include letter grades, whereas the Assembly bill does. And so not sure where that will be going in terms of next steps. I know that we have the, Representative Genrick is bringing Representative Thiesfeld, who chairs that committee, the Assembly Education Committee, to Green Bay to visit our schools. And I think that it will be interesting to see if, hey, he has any more thoughts on that one during his visit with us. And the other piece of that that continues to be of concern, not knowing where it's moving or what it really means, that we talked about a little bit this morning at Expanded Cabinet, is the impact should the proposal on lifting the cap on vouchers, what that will actually mean to our school district. We have no idea what those revenues could mean or would mean because we have no numbers. We don't know what the impact on transportation and so forth. So we look to see where that is going as well. So I think that's, it's every day is a new day and we're monitoring closely. And I know that parents in school districts and school boards across the state have really weighed in to share their concerns about where the state is heading with education and so forth.
Thank you. Next, district events. Time to announce anything that's going on in the district. Did you want to announce that? I see you have the card.
Yes, I would, yes. Tuesday, May 5th, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m., the home of Lois Grace Gold and Phil Flynn. This would be the fifth annual Boot Camp fundraiser for the Fine Arts Institute. And they're looking to raise, hopefully, to raise $40,000 for private lessons. It's really been successful. I know a lot of you have been to that in the past. And same place that it's been last couple of years. And Lois and Phil graciously opening their home for that. The other one I'd want to mention is coming up next week, Wednesday, April 29th, starting at 5:00 with the Resource Fair, an event to follow up the Heroin Summit that was held last September. It's called Glow for Whole Youth Summit. And there will be a Resource Fair, information about healthy living for primarily Ambede High School-age students, and then the program to follow. And that's at Lambeau. It's totally free.
Any other announcements you want to make? All right. Is that? And next we'll go to our system reports. First is Teaching and Learning facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We have three action items that were discussed at length at our work session meeting. And the first, I would move that the middle school mathematics resources as presented be approved.
Second.
Katie, Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the Student Records Policy 347 and Guidelines for the Maintenance and Confidentiality of Pupil Records, 347 Rule, as presented, be approved.
Second.
And I don't know, Melissa wasn't here last time. I don't know if anyone has questions for her. No? Okay. Sandy?
Comment on it, though?
Sure.
Okay. I just want to say that reflecting my three months at Washington and in the interim between leaving East High School and then working at Washington, a lot of things happened with student records. And I had occasion to go into student cum files just a few times. And I've got to tell you, they were, it's like night and day. The improvement is phenomenal. There is no extraneous material. When you need to find something, you can find it. It's very, very organized. And that's something, too, that I know created a lot of angst and a lot of concern. But from what I see, that effort was really worth it. And I compliment you on that.
And she goes and checks periodically, too.
It's night and day. It really is.
That's good to know. It is good to hear.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the Student Security Policy 455 and Procedures for Student Security, 455 Rule, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye. Carrie 5-0.
And that concludes our report.
All right, thanks, Katie. The next organizational support will be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
All right. I will move that the change of private school attendance areas as presented be approved.
Second.
We talked about this last week. Any other questions? Nope. Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the performance contract with McKinstry as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions? Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the 2015-16 fee schedule as presented be approved.
Second.
Did you want to make, this is the first time we're seeing this.
Yeah, I got the fee schedule recommendation is to keep it the same. We have made some additions in the past two or three years. So we really have not made any changes to it for this year.
Sandy?
Dorf?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the 2015-16 building rental fee schedule as presented be approved.
Second.
And again, as we look at the building rental fees, we looked at, took a look at what other districts around here, what their rental fees were. In some areas, we may have increased. In some areas, we may have lowered those amounts. We've taken about $140,000 a year with our rentals to some of the YMCA, the Village of Alloway, and other outside groups. Want to make any other comments?
No, we did check with other districts and feel like we're within, we're in line with what they're renting your facilities for.
All right. Sandy?
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the 2015-16 food service meal price schedule as presented be approved.
Second.
Again, the only increase in the price is the increase to the middle school prices to bring that up to the high school prices. There is a, the federal government requires us to do a calculation of what the meal prices should be based on how much the cost is versus the amount of revenue that you take in. Kathy Walker is not here tonight, the Director of Food Service, but she went through that process. And the only change we had was to increase the middle schools because the size of the meals are very close to where they are right now, between high school and middle school. And so we looked at that as being the same price for both middle school and high school. And again, as our food service program, and I think we talked about that at the audit as well, is that we are grateful and thankful that our food service department still does fund itself, that we are not having to use the general fund dollars to pay for the offset of the negative balance in food service, which is very likely in a lot of districts where the food service program does not pay for itself. And we're very fortunate to have a program that is running well.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
started here, when it was, we were making 10%, 12% on our money, but now we're into that .4%, .5% type. But again, this is the list we bring every year. Angie Robley, our Finance Director, puts that together. She does all the investing for the district and works with the banks to find the best rates. Right now, we're looking at about $95,000 in interest revenue that we have this year, and we're hoping that by the end of the year, we'll have somewhere in the $120,000, so. Still fair, but.
Not like the good old days.
Not like it used to be.
All right, Sandy? Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the issuance of educator contracts for the 2015-16 school year as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy? Becker?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the issuance of educator contracts for the 2015-16 school year as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy? Becker?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the 1.0 FTE Chief Research Evaluation Assessment Officer position as presented be approved.
Second.
Did you want to say anything, Jake?
I don't know the shelter.
This, this position as proposed would provide the supports needed as we, as we move forward with our continuous improvement efforts around accountability, planning, and performance measures. I think one of the things that we've been looking forward to is the data warehouse. It's something that the Board of Education has, has been looking for for a number of years, and a data dashboard that will tell our community where we're at with the various assessment components and evaluation pieces. And I think that this, this particular position will be able to support and help support the monitoring and evaluation of, of our different instructional programs and ensure that we have data-driven decision-making practices and management practices that we've not had in the past. I think that the piece that I see is the need for institutional data collections that we don't always have. By that, I mean as we roll out, for example, different initiatives, what feedback do we get from the staff, and where do we archive that, and who's responsible for it? Do we have an annual report for the Board of Education in our community, like many school districts do, that actually provides you with full reports for each of the buildings, and then different processes moving forward as to how they're being addressed? So, it's a much greater look that will pull the, not only the program evaluation piece in, but also help our assessments and really start to move centrally the work that Teaching and Learning has been trying to do around assessment as well, so.
Brenda, maybe.
Oh, you're, okay. Go ahead.
I don't dispute the need for it, particularly in, in light of what we heard about educator effectiveness and everything that Mark was talking about and doing some assessment of that whole process and what have you. But I, in looking at the job description, this job description and the job description of the two administrators at this position when supervised, seems like there's a lot of overlap. And the issue with data warehouse and some of these other things as far as evaluation, I, I was of the understanding that the Director of Research.
Evaluation Assessment?
Yeah.
Is there an evaluation, doesn't it?
Was charged with that.
The program evaluation?
Program evaluation. Yeah.
You know, I, I think the initial piece and the magnitude of where this position has moved, I think is something that people didn't anticipate. So, for example, there is a huge amount of community liaison, kinds of outreach through a chief on county is one area that has really elevated this need. A lot of our, our grants have expanded and so forth. The capacity there is really important. Also, the piece that's really critical to this position is the understanding of education, and that's why if you look at the expectation around what that person needs to do, a talks leading, supervising, and managing a comprehensive program of student performance. One of the things that we're seeing is that without that shared understanding, it's very hard to determine how to prioritize work. Right now, as our building principals are trying to ensure that they have the data in front of their teachers, I think it's very critical that we have someone who can sit at a table and really understand the educational needs and help prioritize those as well. To be able to talk to the State Department, and Diane, Diane has been working a lot with the assessment system at the state level, to be able to interface with that and then come back and work with Teaching and Learning as another piece of this as well.
Okay. And, you know, not argumentative, but I, you mentioned it being, you know, educationally or education-oriented, and I, again, I don't see why that isn't within the responsibility or the duties of the Director of Assessment, so I'm, I'm missing something altogether here, probably.
The, that's a very good question, and I think that the Director of Assessment component, the primary focus of that particular job responsibility right now is really focused in on the, the state assessments, and the demands of that particular position have changed dramatically since we brought that position on, not recognizing that we would be going to smarter balance, not recognizing the magnitude of that particular position, which is a full-time position as well. The whole assessment system requires, I think, vision and understanding, too, of, how to move student achievement around assessment, and it takes someone with a vision for that as well in partnership with the Director of Assessment.
Have a lot of the duties with the Director of Assessment become more clerical, then, rather than administrative?
I, I wouldn't say that because there's so much interface with the state. I mean, I can't even tell you how many hours this man has spent on the phone with the state of Wisconsin trying to understand the changes. It's been a constant, a constant influx of, of change that he's had to make his way through, and then go to technology, and then go to Teaching and Learning, and get information to principals, and help them manage through this process. It's been extraordinary. I think if we went back and archived the amount of time and resource that has been spent trying to ensure access, trying to ensure readiness, trying to ensure security, trying to ensure those pieces, it's become pretty much more than a full-time job.
More, more technical than administrative, maybe is the better word. It's not clerical, but it's less administrative.
It's not clerical, no.
But more technical, highly skilled technical, but maybe that's.
You know, it, as, as I think about it, and I would, I would offer, and this is where I sit, and I know that, I mean, there's, there's legal, there's, it's become a very complex piece, working closely with CISA, working closely with the state, making sure that there's a shared understanding with our teachers, working with Teaching and Learning to make sure that teachers understand the, the various components of the assessment and so forth. It's an ever-changing piece.
And I think the magnitude of our assessment demands now.
It's different than the pencil paper.
It brought to head that our assessment department, relative to a district, our size, is small. I mean, how many people are in the Madison?
I have.
Department? I think it was.
This is Madison's assessment department. And I, and I'm not saying we need this many people.
No.
But I also understand the fact that if, you know, what, what you're pointing out is really well-taken, because one of the things that we've been doing, and Gina and I have been working on, is having our jobs looked at to see if they're, they're banded and, it is, they don't do banding and greeting, what do they call it? Parody?
They do equity analysis. They look at the, a company such as Fox and Lawson, whom Michelle's familiar with, looks at the jobs, looks at the relative value in the market, but they also look at internal equity within the district.
And so, they would tell us if this job, as we, we refine and make sure that the job description is accurate of what this person is actually doing, not what, this is what was, was intended on the Director of Assessment. What's actually happening is different. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yep. So, then, then we can, we're in a different place than we were how many years ago, when we, four years ago.
Variety of HR matters. Also, there will be a component of education helping with overseeing our new employee orientation, which has been presented.
Can I, Gina, just to, just to clarify, too, there are three EAs retiring this year out of your department, and this is part of a restructure plan, HR as well.
Yes.
EAs or executives?
Oh. I'm sorry.
Any questions? Sandy? Jeffries?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the transfer of Teresa Williams, Executive Director of Elementary Education, to Executive Director, Special Assignment Human Resources as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions? Sandy? Becker?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the 1.0 FTE Director of College Career Community Readiness position, 12 months at Salary Group 9, as presented be approved.
Second.
Does anybody want to say anything? We talked about this last, last week. Okay. Questions? Nope. Go ahead, Sandy. Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the transfer of Lori Pecot, Career Technical Education Coordinator, to Director of College Career Community Readiness as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy? Becker?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the 1.0 FTE Coordinator of College Career Readiness position and associate job description as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy? Becker?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Warren?
Carrie, hi.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the employment of Angela Buchenour as Coordinator of College Career Readiness as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy? Warren?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the Coordinator of Extended Learning Programs' job description as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy? Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the employment of Cory Vandertheis, Coordinator of Extended Learning Programs, 12 months, as presented be approved.
Second. I have a question. So, Salary Group 10, Salary Group 11, so the Coordinator of College and Career Readiness is Salary Group 11, and the Coordinator of Extended Learning Programs is Salary Group 10. Why?
The role of Cory Vandertheis, that, that position will have more supervisory responsibilities.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Sandy? Dorf?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the 1.0 FTE Coordinator of Literacy Intervention position as, and job description as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions? This is a new, we didn't see this last week, or, or last meeting. Sandy? Jeffries?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Carrie 5-0.
I move that the transfer, Todd Chandler, Associate Principal Activities Director, to Associate Principal, as presented be approved.
Second.
This position comes open because Cindy Otto resigned. She's moving out of state, and so Todd wished to transfer to that role, leaving the position that, of the Activities Director with the Assistant Principal, Associate Principal open.
Sandy? Becker?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Carrie 5-0.
And I move that the consent items as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy? Becker?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Jeffries?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Carrie 5-0. That concludes our board meeting. We do have a closed session. I'll read that motion.